Arrived last meeting, so we're gonna pick up there on page 22, which is actually the second part of week one. Called to be a kingdom man. Really, you know, kingdom men rising, we're gonna be talking about through the entire thing. That's our topic. And again, encourage, encourage people to come. And I've told you, we've got extra books. If there's somebody you just wanna, they don't have to come. But somebody you wanna bless with a book, then, you know, do that, do that. So a kingdom man, and we've looked at this definition a few times, and we will be reminded throughout the thing. So what is a kingdom man? How's it defined here? A man who visibly and consistently submits. And notice it does not say visibly and perfectly submits, because none of us are able to do that, but consistently submits. And you know, we mess up, dust off and get back after, get back after. So a man who visibly and consistently submits to the comprehensive relationship and rule of God underneath the lordship of Jesus Christ in every area of life. A lot of times, like people, you know, we give the Lord our heart, but we've not given him all the areas of our life. And we wanna hang on to things, but it is about being submissive to God. So a kingdom man accepts, accepts his responsibilities under God and faithfully carries them out. And faithfully carries them out. You know, if you've heard people say, well, man, he, he don't always get it right, but boy, he's faithful. You know, they keep going and keep pushing about all kinds of different things. But we need to look at that spiritually about accepting our responsibility under God and faithfully carries them out. When he is faithful, when the man is faithful, or excuse me, unfaithful, guess who's gonna slip in and steal the show? Old Satan is gonna see. Now, he'll try to get in when you are being faithful, but the thing is, you're gonna be strong, you're gonna be sensitive to the Holy Spirit, and you're gonna be able to resist a lot of things, or you're gonna catch it before it gets to the point of causing problems and do something about it. And a lot of times, when we get complacent, when we fall away, then that's when it comes in there, and the next thing we know, he's, he's on our back. When he is unfaithful, Satan skills to show. God has called every Christian man to be a kingdom man. Now, you know, there's all kinds of gifts and talents and, and different things that we have, but he has called every one of us to be a kingdom man, to be what God has called us to be. So a question for you to think about here. Says Dr. Evans uses the word consistently in the definition of kingdom man, rather than perfectly. What does it look like to consistently live out a life of submission under God, especially in those times when you do fail? See, it doesn't say if, when you do fail or fall short. So what do you guys think? What does it look like to consistently live out a life of submission to God? Anybody?
Start out by going to church.
Keep trying, you gotta keep coming, you know?
What say Harold?
Lessons like this, come to church.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, getting involved. And again, you know, what I mentioned to there a while ago, it's about, you know, get up, dust off, and get back in the back. Dust off and get back in the back. There was this little old guy, we was growing up teenagers. He wiry is what we called him, right? I seen that boy get beat up more times than anybody in all, out of all my... But he never gave up. He'd get smoked down, he'd get right back up, he'd go at it again, you know? He was faithful, but he was tough, now, let me tell you. But he'd get up, dust off, but see, sometimes we get beat down, and old Satan will do something like that, and we just, we'd just go sit down and wanna quit. Well, I guess, and we'll almost take that as if God. So, well, I guess the Lord don't want me to do that. What would have happened if Paul would've thought that first time he got thrown to jail for preaching the gospel? The man that wrote more books of the Bible than anybody else, and most of them from prison, most of them, hey, he never let the dust settle. He got up and he kept going. Even when he was, the Bible described him at times that he was in stocks. He was locked up, and his ankles was locked up in stocks. So another question for you. Why is it spiritually dangerous to make excuses for your failures rather than accept responsibility for where you may have dropped the ball?
Because he's not being honest with himself.
Yeah. And I think when we start to make excuses, it's like saying, here, Satan, hold this piece of armor for me.
Also going on here, this, this opens up a door for Satan to be able to come in a little at a time.
That's right. You know, so here, hold my shield for a little while, Satan. Hold my helmet for me. You know, hold my belt for me. And, you know, we're exposing ourself, and when we make up them excuses, he gonna slip in. He's gonna slip in, and we start taking off those pieces of armor. Again, our goal is consistency, not perfection. And the good thing about the grace of God is we are gonna mess it up, but then he extends that grace once more. I mean, that's where he describes to Peter about seventy times seven. That's, that's, just grace keeps coming. He has got lots to give. So another question for you. How does personal ownership of failure or mishaps impact others? So now we looked at ourself, and now we're looking at how's it impact those around us? Anybody's got an answer for that one?
I think you answered a while ago. You just don't ever give up, you keep getting back. Like you said about the guy fighting.
Yeah, that's right. And I think one of the things that helps people see is, you know, we're imperfect too. You know, you take somebody that's not in church, and they see us as we're imperfect too, we mess up too, and, and, but we gotta give God the glory. Do you have?
Let us know that you're honest and strong enough to take responsibility. That in turn helps build trust, and hopefully, if they have faults of their own, help them realize that they were all, were all human and were lost at a time and learn to expect, accept their failures as well.
Yeah. That is it, yes, sir?
Never turn their back on him.
Right.
Because there's no armor for the back.
Yeah, we got to, we got to be careful. We got to be careful. It's like, I was, I was working with Camden's baseball team. I got pulled in to help the coach. I didn't plan on that. I was like, I need some, one more thing, but that's okay. That's what he wanted to do. But I was teaching this, this young man how to lead off. And, and he started to lead off, and he was putting his head down. I said, baby, you gonna get smoked right here. I said, don't ever take your eye off the pitcher's feet. I said, that's what you need, you don't need to watch his hands. You don't need to watch his head, watch his feet. I said, but keep your eye on him, I said, the whole time. You know, and that's how we do sometimes with Satan. We take our eye off, and we get focused on something else. And, and, 'cause old Satan's gonna throw up every distraction. I mean, he's the master of distraction. And he's gonna do anything and everything we can. You know, there is, pornography is rampant. And I read a statistic not too long ago that, I wanna say sixty to seventy percent of pastors battle with that. Pastors, nobody is exempted. Nobody is exempted. So don't, you know, don't get to thinking that you are. Next question says, in what ways can you take greater responsibility for mistakes or issues in your own family and in your friendships? So I put, by digging deeper and growing closer to the Lord. Digging deeper, growing closer to the Lord, and then let it impact your life and your lifestyle. See, if, if getting into the Word of God is, is bringing no impact on your life, then you've got some type of spiritual block. There is, there is no way you could study and dig into the Word of God and it not impact you unless you have put up some type of spiritual block. And then there's a deeper problem there. So just a few things, that middle paragraph, living as kingdom men requires submission, which is again, consistence, consistency coupled with humility. So it's consistency in the Lord and humility before the Lord, before the Lord. I mean, one of the most powerful things you can do, probably in your home, is say, I'm sorry. Or in a relationship, period, is say, I'm sorry. And that's a tough thing to do sometimes, because, you know, we're kinda, I don't know, it's in our nature, I guess, to not say that. But God created men for greatness in his kingdom. And some of the, you know, people think, well, I'm just, you know, I'm introverted and I'm quiet and all that. Some of the greatest impacts that's ever been on me is some of the most humble, quiet men in the churches that I've been around. Big time impact on me. And they never said much, but they was always doing. They just never said much, they never got in the light, and really, really big impact. So we need to be humble before God. And God, again, God created men for greatness in his kingdom. We'll look at that last scripture there. And it says in Galatians 3:29, "And if..." There's that, that, I say, that's one of the biggest, deepest, broadest, widest words in the Bible, even though it's only two letters. "If you belong to Christ, then you are Abraham's descendants and heirs according to the promise." Heirs according to the promise. So with that thought in mind, describe how it makes you feel, makes you feel to know that you're truly an heir according to the promises given to Abraham. What comes to mind there?
Didn't have any words.
That's right. Yeah, to me, it just, it drives me to wanna learn more. It drives me to want to grow more. It drives me to want to live it out loud. We got too many people that claim to be Christians, and I'm pretty sure they're in some special group called the Secret Service for Jesus, because nobody knows that they're serving Jesus. And that's not what I read in the scriptures. We are to live for the Word. All right, top of page 24 there. Hit some high points here. The second question says, how would you like to see God bless others through you in the future? And you know, some of these questions you read, and you're like, well, gosh, I don't even really like to answer that. I sound, you know, kinda conceited. You know, the first question, how, how have you seen God bless others through you? If you're living for God, others have been blessed through you. If you're not, then they haven't. But the question, I want you to, I want somebody to answer for us. How would you like to see God bless others through you in the future? Anybody?
I'd like to go back to walk in the streets like we used to do. You know, go knock on some doors and...
Yes, sir.
Tell them we got some good news for them, you know?
That's right. Yeah, Ms. Pam and her crew with the kids on Sunday afternoons, two Sundays a month, they go out and they go visit, and they'll give out stuff. They'll go see some of our shut-ins. You know, that is, that is a huge impact. And, and like Ms. Pam says, all the time, see, they don't have to be part of our church. You know somebody you want us to go see, knock on their door? And they'll sing to them. You know, those kids just, just love it. I called, I called Sunday afternoon, and I was sitting in my office, and I called to check on Ms. Eloise, and Pam answered the phone. They were over there with the kids, going checking on Ms. Eloise. Yeah, she had fallen, and it was beat up pretty bad there. So they went to check on her. You know, you should, you should see others drawing closer to the Lord because of your relationship in the Lord. You should see that. You know, you should be an example that other people will say, man, what do you have? You know, even if they don't know anything about Christianity. What do you have? How can you have peace through something like this? How can, you know, how can you have joy through something like this? And it gives you that opportunity to be an impact. But the question to really think about is, are you available to him? Are you available to him? And that, that may answer the rest of the question. And I want, ultimately, I want them, whoever, to see me faithful. Through the good, through the bad, through the loss, through the ugly. I want them to see me faithful. Yes, sir?
Brother Jason, my, my little granddaughter, she come up to me crying one day. She said that her little cousin, she said, he, he said he hated Jesus. And I said, well, baby. She said, why did he do, why did he say that?
She broke her heart.
Yeah. I said, baby, he don't know. I said, you gotta teach him. She said, well, I let him have it pretty good.
See, I won't teach him, all right?
I said, you gotta teach him like that.
Yeah.
You gotta tell him what he did. He died for, for all of us.
That's right.
That is so important, because I had a same incident with a friend. She came up to me, I think about last Thursday, she says, Dad, she's out of the hospital. She said, I'm really hurt, Jason. Why are you hurting her? She says, I've talked to this friend of mine, and we was talking about Jesus, and he said he wanna go to him. She said, I can't understand. Brother Jason, you're just like you did about it. I says, you gotta pray for him. You just don't understand. That's so important.
Yeah, I think we, we oughta ask ourselves, do people see us as someone that is excited about heaven? You know, do they see that in us? So if they don't see that in us, then what are they gonna get excited about? You know, we claim to believe it, yet we don't live like we believe it. So a lot to think about there. But you know, are we available to him? And do we really want others to see us faithful? Abraham's promise is ours through Jesus Christ. If you want it, it is yours, and we need to own it. We need to own it. You are meant to pass your blessing on to others. You're not meant to hold on to it and hide it. You're meant to pass that blessing on to others. To embrace God's promises naturally includes influencing those around you. Influencing those around you. You know, and when you, when you get in tune with God and in tune with his will, it's just naturally gonna happen. It is naturally gonna happen. You know, I venture to say that the reason that the church isn't full as it is Sunday morning, on Sunday night, and on Wednesday night, is because people are not seeking to be in tune with the will of God. They're not. There, there's no way that you're seeking the will of God, but you're not seeking the will of God. I mean, you're not gonna grow in the Lord if you're not studying the Word of God. Now, you know, and some people, well, I don't have to go to church to be saved. That's, that's a pretty shallow argument. You know, is it true? Yeah, if you wanna get real technical. But, but if somebody is in love with the Lord, you are gonna want to be around people of God. You are gonna want to grow. And if you don't, there is a spiritual issue going on there in their lives. So a question for you. Describe someone you know who influences and elevates the lives of others simply by who he is and what he does, or she.
Jason, I heard the story this past week of an Amish family that their teenage daughter was murdered by a young man.
Yes, sir.
And this Amish family went to the parents of the young man and said, we're hurt for you. What can we do to minister?
The family of the young man that killed their, their kid.
Right.
I, I read about that.
Did you?
Yes, sir.
Well, you, I didn't read, I heard about it, so you probably know more about it.
It, it is a fact.
Yeah.
And I mean, how?
What a demonstration.
Of grace.
Of grace.
Yes.
And the love of the Lord Jesus.
And everybody around you would say, there's no way I would do that. But Jesus would. Jesus did.
Yes, he did.
He did. The very people that were in the process of murdering him, won't talk about murder. I mean, they had nothing to convict him on, nothing. Yet they killed him anyway, by mob rule. And, and, and all he had on his mind was grace. Given grace. What an example. You know, I, I mean, you, there's, I'm sure you have some individuals that come to mind, and I've talked about, I've talked about him before, but Brother Lynn didn't. He, he was just the pillar of the community, a guy, probably one of the most godly men I've ever met in my life. And, and he always said, he said, I wanna die with sweat on my brow. That was one of his little sayings. I wanna die with sweat on my brow. And two weeks before he died, he went to his pastor, and he said, you know, he said, I've seen my children saved. He said, I've seen my, my son-in-law and daughter-in-law saved. I've seen my grandchildren saved. He says, man, I'm ready. Two weeks later, he died weeding his neighbor's ditch. He died with sweat on his brow, serving his neighbor. And he did that through all the community. And just, just a beautiful man, beautiful spirit. And, and one of his sayings, they painted it in the parking lot at the school. He says, if, if that's all that happens, we're gonna be all right. You know, just about anything that come up, if that's all that happens, we're gonna be all right. He said that all the time. But he didn't just say it, he meant it. He believed that. He knew that, that in Christ, he knew it was gonna be all right, no matter what happened. No matter what happened, it's gonna be all right. So you know, you can think of different people, but next question there. How can you position yourself to be used by God, by God more so in elevating the lives of those within your sphere or your area of influence to a greater degree? As Harold's son answered it a couple times, you know? Learning more. I mean, you're not gonna, you're not gonna do more until you learn more. And we begin to grow, and, and as we begin to grow spiritually, we begin, you know, that, that builds our spiritual competence. And, you know, that's one of the things that scared me the worst about becoming a pastor. I began to put it on me, and I said, Lord, there's no way I could prepare a sermon every Sunday. I mean, I've been teaching teenagers for fifteen years. You know, we'll go through a book, that's easy. I mean, this, this, anybody can go through one of these. But to prepare a sermon every Sunday all year? That scared me, Brother Goins. That was literally one of the biggest hurdles I had to get over. And you know what? God has been faithful every Sunday. Now, I'm sweating bullets a couple of midnights. Lord, me and this blank paper gotta go somewhere. But God has always, always provided, always provided.
Wait till you walk to the pool, big, you lay that piece of paper out there, and all the print falls off of it. That's scary.
God, I don't even wanna imagine, Brother Goins.
It's, it's happening.
That's why, I don't, you know, I see preachers, and maybe it's just, I don't know, maybe I'm, I ain't, I ain't got there yet, you know? They'll, they'll have, this is what we gonna preach for the, the next two months. I ain't that brave. I'm not that brave yet. At least that's what I call it. Because God, God, it, it, something that happens during the week, you know, leads me to scripture. Something that I see leads me to a topic, you know, different, different things. So, you know, we should, we should wanna learn more, we should wanna do more, and we should make it all about him. Would somebody turn to Matthew chapter five and verse 16? In, in thinking of this question, how can you position yourself to be used by God more so in elevating or lifting up the lives of those within your area of influence to a greater degree? So, somebody wanna read Matthew 5:16? Who's got it? Go ahead.
Says, let your light so shine before men that they may see your good works and glorify your Father, which is in heaven.
See, he doesn't say, if you feel like it, let your light shine. That, that is almost to me, look like a command. He says, let your light shine. And then people say, well, I don't want, you know, I don't want people to look at me. It ain't about you. The rest of the scripture says, so that they may see God in what you're doing. You know, let, let God, you know, you, you know, God's gonna give us works, talents, different things that we're good at, and, and it is all about glorifying him. But some people, you know, begin to glorify themselves. You know, King Nebuchadnezzar was a great example. You know, I just picture, you know, when, when, when he walked out, and, and, you know, he was probably a couple of stories above all the people, and he walks out. You know, in the scripture, I just kinda, you know, he says, you know, look at, look at what all I've done. Look at my great statue, likeness of me. I mean, he made himself into a God and treated his people like garbage. And what did God do? God struck him down, and he was on his hands and knees, eaten like the animals. Grew up, you know, just, he, he became an animal essentially, because he was so full of himself. God is gonna humble someone. He will. We need to be humble before God. You know, Nebuchadnezzar didn't quite figure that out. But we need to do things so that, you know, let our light shine, work for God, so, so that he may be glorified. Success from God's perspective has more to do with heart than skill. It is all about being available, not able, available. It, it took me, I don't know, two years, three years, four years? I mean, I can say until I was twenty-three, I was already a grown young man. Long way from grown up, but it, it took me three, I don't know, four years, whatever it was. It's a long time before I could stand and pray in front of anybody. I prayed a lot. I didn't want nobody to hear me pray. I was scared to death of it. And it, it took me several years to get to that point, but it's, it's more about heart than skill. You know, people say, well, I just don't, I just don't pray a good prayer like so-and-so. That ain't what, that ain't what it's about, praying. I mean, some of the most precious prayers you will hear is a little old kid. And what does God say about our faith? Need to have faith of a child.
That's right.
Because they get up there, and when I ask those little ones, now, some of them I'm a little more careful with than others. And, but, but, man, they just pray whatever's on their heart. They are talking to God. That is what they're doing. And, and many of us are too ashamed to do that. I mean, I had a grown man, big old burly guy, get plum fighting mad at me, didn't come to church for two months, 'cause I asked him to pray. There's a spiritual problem with that. That, that ain't, that ain't, that, that is, that is, that isn't about skill, it's about heart. Something's wrong there. Something's wrong there. I mean, you, you ought to be, and, and like I did, I prayed about praying, but, but, you know, it's like praying for patience, right? God provided me the opportunity to stand in front of the church and pray. Scared to death, don't have a clue what I said, but, but it got, you know, I got more confident in God. Really is what it was. It wasn't in me. I got more confident in God, because I just backed up and said, okay, God. Obviously, I can't do it, you know, but we got to be, you know, he makes the, the, the available able. He makes the available able. Think about that. So, top of page 25 there. It says, towards the bottom there, second, the last couple sentences. It says, it is your willingness to show up in life, day in and day out, and we'll come back to scripture about that in a second. To, you know, be present in relationships. Put forth the effort on the job. Commit, give, apply diligence, study the Word, invest in others, and the like that will shape your own legacy of distinction. God loves to use those who want to be used by him. If you don't want to be used by God, there's a good chance he'll just say, okay. But now, he may do you like old John, too. Swallow you up, turn you back around, bring you back where he wants you to be. He may very well do that too. But God wants us to be available. The, the little bullets there in italics says, show up, be present, stay consistent. Show up, be present, stay consistent. Somebody would look up 2 Timothy, chapter four, verse two. Give me a hand, that way everybody ain't trying to look it up at the same time.
Here, I get it.
All right. Corey's got it back there. He's behind the camera. 2 Timothy 4:2. Show up, be present, stay consistent.
Ready? So preach the word, be instant in season, out of season, reprove, review, exhort with all long suffering and doctrine.
In season and out. In season and out. We need to be ready. We need to be prepared. And, and God telling you, if you are available, God is gonna provide every time. Now, you might not be satisfied with whatever you did, but if you did it for God, he is. I promise you. And somebody's gonna be blessed because of it. And, and ultimately, you're gonna be blessed because of it. We need to be ready in season and out of season. You never know when you're gonna have the opportunity. I was sharing with somebody the other day, you know, about little things that we hang on to. Little old, just little, we would call them just little small sins that we like to hang on to. But what them little small sins do is chip away at your testimony. They chip away at your testimony. And it, you know, it's not like walking over to somebody in a restaurant and walk over and visit with somebody that you know from the church, and the waiter, waiter, or waitress shows up with a tray with alcohol, and they look at the preacher, and they look at their alcohol. And we just destroy our testimony. We can destroy our testimony by the littlest things that we try to hang on to. So there, towards the end, says, men, each of you are called to a life of greatness and purpose in God's kingdom. But greatness is created day in and day out when you show up and invest in the lives of others. It also requires that you be diligent in keeping... It also requires that you be diligent in keeping your own spiritual muscles strong." That, that, that is what we're doing, studying this word. That is what we do on Wednesday nights, studying this word. That is what we do on Sunday mornings. That is what we do on Sunday night. We are working out our spiritual muscles. And if you want them to grow, they'll grow. I promise you, you go home and, and you lift up that dumbbell and you curl it every night, three or four sets, 10. Your muscles are gonna grow whether you want them to or not. You come and you dive into the Word of God and you exercise your faith, it's gonna grow. It's gonna, "God, I want my faith to grow." Well, the answer's in the question, you know, "How can I make my faith grow? I wanna get closer to Jesus." The answer's in the question. "How am I gonna get closer to Roger?" Well, I got to go over here and get closer to him. I can't just stand over here and keep saying it and not do anything about it. That's how we're gonna get closer to Jesus. You know, look at that prayer there. It says, "Pray for discipline, uh, the, the, pray for the discipline you need to live consistently as a kingdom man. Ask," so you see pray, then you see ask, "God, to provide the structure in your life that will enable you to focus more fully on Him and His call for you. If you are in need of encouragement, take," so you see pray, you see ask, you see, "Take a moment to look around you and consider the impact you have had on others for good and God's kingdom. If you are unable to recognize anything, ask the Spirit to reveal it to you. Then build on that success every moment of every day." And there's the key, moving forward. You see, you see pray, you see ask, you see take, you, you see consider, you see build, these, these key, key words. All right, so we're gonna bump over to the next section here. Any, any comments or, you know, that finishes up week one, uh, that section? Any comments or questions about what we just went through? All right, somebody wanna read that scripture that's there on the, the cover of page four, week two, Ezekiel 37 in the book there?
The hand of the Lord was upon me and he brought me out of the spirit of the Lord and sent me down in the middle of the valley and it was full of bones. He caused me to pass among them around the valley and behold, there were very many on the surface of the valley and lo, they were very dry. And he said to me, "Son of man, can these bones live?" And I answered, "Oh, Lord God, you know."
So, you know, you, you take Ezekiel's right here, dry bones. Can anything be done with these? You know, and the Lord, sometimes I, I just felt like, you know, he, he follows us around and, and we see an opportunity and the Lord says, "Think anything could be done here? Probably not, Lord." Yeah, that's, that's a lot of time, that's first place, "Probably not, Lord, probably not." I mean, a lot of people, you say that about me? Reckon you're getting to him? Probably not. Their bones is too dry. And, uh, God can do anything. So we'll be talking about the topic of dry bones dancing. So just, uh, kind of an introduction to, to the video, I, I changed a little bit. So we've, we've talked about being chosen for the challenge to live as kingdom men. So share one way you were encouraged by last week's session that we've been through. You know, and, and, and to me, what, what I've been encouraged, just, just reading what little bit we've went through, uh, over the last few times that we've been together is just encouraged to be a better servant, to be a better servant. Anybody wanna share just something that, that maybe you've been encouraged by or some little revelation that, that's come to you through that first section? Don't everybody jump at once like the brink of peppermints or something. So we will learn in, in moving forward here to overcome Satan's distractions and trust in God's plans, purposes, and promises for us. I promise you, for whatever my promises were, God has plans, God has purposes, and God has promises for you, every one of us. But most of the time we'll say, "Well, God, I don't like your plans. God, I don't like the purpose of what you're doing." And, and by saying all that, we're saying, "God, I don't want your promise. I don't want your promise." Because, and I, I said, you know, when I was, was really dealing with, I had been in youth ministry for three years or so. I was dealing with that, that call, the true sincere call in the ministry. And I was so reluctant, I did not even want anybody calling me a youth minister. I'm just a youth leader. I didn't even want to have the word minister tied to because I was battling with that. And, and one of the preacher, Tommy Briel, y'all heard me talk about him, he was from LA, lower Alabama. That's what he told everybody, "I'm from LA." And, uh, I, I went to his house and was, was just trying to figure out, "What, what do you want me to do, Lord? What direction do you want me to head?" And, and Brother Tommy said, you know, "If, if, if God's calling you, you feel like God's calling you in the ministry." He said, "Until," he said, "If you do anything else, do that. Anything else, you do that." He said, "And when nothing else will do it, then you know." And it took me a long time to get there. It took me a long time to get there because, you know, some of the men in the church would, would say, "Oh, this is our youth," oh, no, I'm just a youth leader. I'm not the youth pastor. I was, I was just, I was just restraining myself, did not wanna get there. You know, I'm, I'm just encouraged to be a better servant. So Satan uses a, a strategy in our lives by keeping static on the line or inserting distractions into our hearts and minds so that we cannot hear clearly from God. I was working on a message the other night and phone was laying over here. I literally, I had a verse of scripture in my head and, and I said right then, "Write it down, write it down." And then I got, I looked over, I saw, "Oh, I need to check something right quick." And I put my phone down and I went, "Man," it was gone, just like that. And I sat there for five minutes staring at the top of my head and, and then come back to me finally, but just that easy. You know, I was sitting in, in the chair and, and, and working on a message and just, the squirrel ran by and I grabbed him, you know? We have to be careful, oh Satan, man, he will come in, he will kinda make things seem staticky, you know, you, somebody calls you and, and it's staticky, first thing you gonna, you gonna say, "I can't hear you, you gonna hang up." And, uh, see, the old devil wants to put static in there because he wants to get you disoriented, not headed the way that you ought to head. But God's calling each of us loudly and clearly, each and every man. He is calling us loudly and clearly. It's up to us to focus, to clear the static and tune in to what He has to say, to what He has to say. Let's pray before we watch the video. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you, Lord. We thank you for these men. Or we thank you for this study, Lord. I pray, Lord, that we can get each and every nugget that you have given us, you have laid before us, Lord, that we take it, we grasp it, we embrace it, Lord. I pray that we can lift your name up, Lord, that, that, that our works can be seen before others, Lord, be seen by others, Lord, but you be glorified in that. Lord, we just thank you for your love, your mercy, and your grace in Jesus' name. Amen. All right, Corey, go ahead, start that video.
Welcome to session two of our series, Kingdom Men Rising. In this session, we want to turn hopelessness into hope. We want to turn despair into exhilarating excitement about the future. Hopelessness is a terrible thing because hopelessness means you've given up on the future. You've thrown in the towel. Far too many men today are living in hopelessness. You see this hopelessness when they walk away from their responsibilities to themselves, to their families. You see the hopelessness when they no longer believe that even heaven can make a difference in history. You see the hopelessness when the culture has gone awry, in conflict, in division, one crisis after another. And it causes the question to be raised, "Only God can fix this." Well, you know, you kinda absolutely right. God has a way of letting things get so bad until the only way you can look is up. And there's a desperate need today for men who are sinking low to look up so that we can dance again. You see in Ezekiel 37, it's a story about an, an army that had failed. These were men involved in a nation that had failed because they had so distanced themselves from God that now, instead of living on a mountaintop, they were rotting in a valley. It's known as the Valley of Dry Bones, where there was little life, no life, where there was mere existence. Just go and do the motions, you know what it is? To get up every day and go to that same old job after you've eaten that same old breakfast, go by that same old person and you do that same old work for that same old pay in that same old place and you take that same old car and drive it back to that same old house to hear that same old noise from those same old kids. And you pick up that same old remote to look at those same old TV programs and eat that same old dinner, get a coat by that same old person. And then you go to bed that same old way to wake up tomorrow to go through that same old routine and life just becomes dry. I want you to know that you can dance again, that as a man you can recapture, reclaim what God has intended for you. In Ezekiel 37, the prophet has to answer a question. The question was, "Can these bones live again? Can we come to life again? Can we be the men God has created us to be? Can we re-carve out our destiny even if we have failed, even if we've not lived up to our job description, even if we have blown it? Can these bones live again?" Ezekiel's answer is, is the answer for a lot of men today. He says, "God, only you know." I can't answer that question because stuff looks so bad and we're in such a mess and things are so divided and the chaos is so overwhelming. Can these bones get up and can we actually get back to life as you created it to be? God, only you know. In other words, if this is gonna be fixed, you have to fix it because all of our attempts to fix it on our own have failed. Isn't that the truth? The politicians have failed, the churches have failed, the families have failed, you know, everything is failing all around us. Can these bones live again? Can we climb out of this deep, dark hole and turn things around? Yes, we can if God will get his men to rise up. So God has to help Ezekiel out. He says, "Ezekiel, two things are needed if these bones led by this army of men, if these bones are gonna live again, if they are gonna be kingdom men rising." He says, "First of all, prophesy, that is, speak on my behalf. Men, if we're gonna become the men God has created us to be, we have to get back to God's Word." There are two answers to every question. God's answer and everybody else, and everybody else is wrong. God has spoken and he has not stuttered. His word must be the final word on every subject, regardless of how you were raised, regardless of what your mom and dad taught you, regardless of what you learned in school. God's word must supersede everybody else's word, even your word, to yourself. He says, "Ezekiel, prophesy these words. Tell them what I say because they're not listening to me, they're leading to their own understanding and that has distanced them from me." You know, I, I was listening to my favorite radio station on my way to another city and the further I got from my town going to the next town, static entered in on the local station I was listening to. And then I lost the sound and the signal altogether because I'd gone so far from the signal, I couldn't hear what was being said or what was being sung because too much interference had gotten on the line until I couldn't hear it at all. Men, we've gotten so far from the definition of manhood that God has said it is. We've become cultural men, we've become secular men, we've become educated men, but we've become rebellious men. And so rather than kingdom men rise, then we've been secular men falling. And we find ourselves in a valley that only God can get us out of. But guess what? When I made my way back from the town I was going to, to go back to the place I was coming from, I picked up the signal again. All of a sudden, the static became less and the sound became clearer. And the closer I got to home, the clearer things became. You see, the reason we've been in the valley is we wandered too far from home. And God is calling his men back and he's saying, "If I can get you to pay attention to me, listen to me, let me override you, you'll pick up the signal and you'll hear me more clearly and I will show you the route to get out of the hole that you placed yourself in and rise to the mountaintop of your responsibility and leadership role that I've called you to." This is a call for kingdom men to rise and get up out of the valley. He said, "There's a second thing, because you can hear my word and still not be changed." You remember the movie, uh, Frankenstein, don't you? He was created and he became a, you know, he was, he was functionally structured, but laying on the table, he had no life until a bolt of electricity hit him and that bolt of electricity brought him to life. He had structure, but no life. You see, when you hear the word of God, that will give you structure, it will give you guidance, it will give you a definitive word, but you need a bolt of electricity to make it live. See, the question in Ezekiel 37 is, "Can these bones live again?" He said, "Ezekiel, prophesy, but after you prophesy, call on my spirit to ignite life through the Word into the dry bones." And when the spirit connects with the Word, life happens and the bones begin to connect again. Skin came over the bones, Ezekiel 37 says. And the bones began to shake and move and the army began to rise and the culture began to heal, not because of a secular structured program, not because of who was elected to enter into a particular office, but because God's army of men rose and became what they were created to be because the distance between them and God was corrected. Men, we've been away from God too long. And because we have distanced ourselves and gone to another place called the culture rather than to the kingdom, we've watched us drag our lives and our families and our society into a dry place. And only God can get inside of this. If you wanna see your life healed and our world healed, then you are going to have to come home. And you remember the saying, right? "There's no place like home." When you go on a long trip, you know, a long trip, and then you come back from a long trip, have you ever noticed? Even though the distance is the same, it seems shorter when you're going back home than it did when you left. The distance is the same, but the time seems shorter. That's only because you're going home. It may have taken you a while to get away from God, but the good news like a prodigal son is, if you come home, he's able to reduce the time and he's able to give you back the life you thought you lost. You may be in a dry place now, but there's a mountaintop calling your name and calling everybody under your influence. Again, it's time for kingdom men to rise.
Well, I hope that you, uh, get something out of those videos and I, I really enjoy Dr. Taylor Tony Evans and, and I, I've listened to some of his videos for quite some time now and his... Tony Evans and I've listened to some of his videos for quite some time now and his, huge part of his ministry is men, huge part of his ministry. Just a few things there on that blank page that each and every one of us have in the book, the things that jumped out at me in the video is hopelessness into hope. See, that is what God offers and then just the thought, dry bones? So. You know, and we look at society and I let it get me down too. You know, I turn the TV on right now and man, it looks like dry bones. And God says, it doesn't have to stay that way. And then I think God says, but go look in the mirror first, what do them bones look like? What do those bones look like? And, you know, men, he said, men must seek to become the men God's called them to be. And that made me think of the verse, John 3:30, you know, we talk about that, mine and Beverly's favorite verse. You know, if you want more of God, right? There's got to be less of you because he's not gonna shove his way in. He's not gonna do it. You got a John 3:30, you know, as me and Beverly say that, you got a John 3:30. And if there's gonna be more God, the only way that's gonna be work is to be less, the only way that's gonna work is to be less of you. So the world and the society looks to be dry bones, but it doesn't have to stay that way. And when we get on fire for God, we begin to perceive things differently. And I mean, if you really want to get down to it, go ahead and read the rest of the book and you'll see who wins. You'll see who wins and you'll also see, you know, I had acne really, really bad from time, I was about eighth grade till I was about senior in high school and, you know, it's gotta get worse before it gets better. That's what the doctor said, it's gotta get worse before it gets better. And that's how, that's how things are gonna be, but we can't give up. We can't give up, no matter how much worse it looks on TV, no matter how bad it seems when you go home, you can't give up. You could quickly, just like he said, you could quickly come back home. You spent all that time running and running and running, but when you turn around, the Lord is right there. The Lord is right there. He says, I've been waiting, I've been waiting. You know, that's what he's calling out to us. So over there on page 30 where it says, man up, just kind of an introduction to what you guys will look at over the next couple of weeks, man up, it says, read Isaiah 64:4. It says, for from or since days of old, they have not heard or perceived by ear, nor has the eye seen a God besides you who acts in behalf of the one who awaits for him. You know, a lot of times we say, man, I just don't feel like I hear from God anymore. Are you listening? Are you seeking, you know, something to really be thinking about? So a question for you, what do you think those who did not hear, as referenced in 64:4 there, we just read, could not discern or perceive God's voice? Why do you think that? Anybody got a thought? You know, scripture says that from days of old, it's been forever since we've heard anything from God. And, you know, and I've heard people say that and I think it's because they had, they had fallen away. They had fallen away. They had, they had backed off from God, you know? And it breaks my heart, you know, when I hear a story like, oh, so and so, man, he used to be so involved in the church. You know, I see some old pictures of the canyon, several men, they were not ever pictured. We should just see them every once in a while now. What happened? What happened? You know, and we all probably know somebody like that, but we, you know, we move, we move away and I think that's what happened here in Ezekiel. Next little question's here, in what ways is the lack of hearing evident in our culture today? You know, we talked about it in my sermon last Sunday and, you know, we talked about where, you know, one of our congressmen, not Louisiana congressman, but one of our congressmen said, you know, God's will has no place in this Congress. You tell me culture hadn't fallen and been evident that they have done that? In what ways? How does proximity to God increase our ability to hear from him? So, you know, being close to him is absolutely critical. And if you are not in the word of God, you are gonna have a hard time hearing from God because, you know, this, you're not, I must go ahead and tell you, you're not gonna hear the honest voice of God, not according to the scripture. People can say what they want, but according to the word of God, you know, and like Moses could not even look upon God, right? He could not. Stick to the scripture. But God speaks to us through his word. You want to hear from God? Open this up, start reading and he's gonna talk to you. You want to hear from the word of God? You sit in on a sermon, he's gonna speak to you. You want to hear from the word of God? Listen in to some music, some of our, you know, praise and worship and some of our hymns, you'll hear from God if you want to hear from God. Far too many men have left home. We've left our commitment to God and have committed to our culture instead. Well, but man, if I want my son to make the best spot on the team, I'm gonna have to go to practice on Wednesday and play on Sundays. And, you know, we marry up to the culture. We marry up to the culture and just not too long ago, you would have never heard of that, I mean, in my life, a nine-year-old, some of y'all. But would not practice on Wednesdays and Sundays, that would not happen. It ain't a second thought now. It ain't a second thought. We practice on Wednesday so we can play on Sunday, right? Far too many have left home. We've left our commitment to God and have committed to our culture instead, yet we still wonder why we're in a dry place. I don't know why. My relationships are falling apart. Where's God in it? Oh, I come when I can. But, Brother Gwynne's called, Billy Go religion, right? You butt everything. And a lot of people do, I come when I can. So we still wonder why we're in a dry place and we're not picking up heaven's signal anymore. To hear from heaven, we need to leave the dry place, far away from home, and trust in the God who breathes life where there appears to be none. Somebody want to read that scripture there, Ezekiel 37, 1 through 3? Come on, read that one in your book there. The hand of the Lord was upon me and he brought me out by the Spirit of the Lord and sent me down in the middle of the valley. It was full of bones. He caused me to pass among them roundabout and behold, there were very many on the surface of the valley and lo, they were very dry. He said to me, son of man, can these bones live? And I answered, oh, Lord God, you know. Yeah, and that's, you know, we talked about that in the video and we're that way a lot of times, you know? It's like God nudges a little question and we're like, oh, I don't know, God, only you know. And God's looking at you, right? Like, get up. You know, I talked about, I think it's Chris Tomlin that sings the song, and I've talked about it several times, you know? And in the song, the individual is questioning, God, why don't you do something? Why don't you do something, God? Dry bones everywhere, he said, I did. I created you. I mean, that's what God is telling us. So he brought me out. We need to look at that. So what areas are these are more thought provoking here? What areas of our culture today? Either the church culture or the culture at large appear to be beyond fixing from a human perspective. Describe a time where you felt like you had no solution to the problem and yet you witnessed God come through to turn it around. I think if we were honest, we could all give an example there. The account of Ezekiel and the dry bones lying dead on the valley floor reflects what many men sense in their lives during trials and difficulties. You know, a lot of times we just, it's just too dry, Lord, I just ain't gonna be able to get through this, there's just nothing I can do about it. The next little sentence there says, if we're going to become the men God created us to be, we have to trust God's power. God has spoken and he has not stuttered. The scripture is full of God's guidance. You know, a lot of people say that Solomon was given the gift of wisdom or no, they say he was the wisest man ever. I don't necessarily agree with that when you read all the things that he did. See, God gives us all gifts and a lot of times we don't use them and Solomon didn't always use that gift of wisdom. I mean, anybody have 600 wives? I don't know about the wisdom part there, right? And then, man, just all the troubles that that would have brought on and so, but what he did do is he wrote a whole bunch of scripture to give us something to learn from. He said, hey, I tried this and this is what happened. Don't do this. I mean, it's all through the scriptures, but when we did Paul, we learned things from Paul, we learned things from a lot of the men in the Bible there. So a couple of things to think about there at the bottom, what promises of God do you believe men need to trust in today? Think about that when you study through this the next two weeks. What promises do you need to trust in personally? So I like how he throws a general question out there and says, what do you think men need to do? And a lot of times it's easy to come up with them answers, right? And then he says, what do you need to do? What do you need to do? We need to look at ourself there. And that prayer at the bottom says, Father, make us men who hear you clearly. Remove the static from the line so that we can discern your voice. Help us identify the distractions in our lives that are keeping us from truly turning to you and understanding the truths. You've outlined for us in your word, in Christ's name. Amen. He says, make us men. He says, remove. He says, help. But a lot of it is up to us that we've got to get up and we've got to move forward and not just sit there and become a dry bone. So we're gonna stop right there and you have the next two weeks to study through, what is study through page 41? So about nine pages, 10 pages worth there, study. I don't know if we'll maybe do all of those next time we come together, but we'll go as far as time allows and I don't want to go any later than this. And let's be sure and study that. Any last thoughts or comments about what we've studied or about whatever? Anybody?
God's plan is men to be leaders.
Absolutely. No matter what this culture says.
If we're not, we're not in God's plan.
Yes, sir. Yeah, if you want to be in God's plan, you know, people say, I just, I just want to be in God's plan.
Get in.
Then get in. I mean, doors open, doors open, we just need to get in. All right, if everybody would, let's stand. Little Rob, would you close us in a word of prayer, please?
Well, thank you, David, Lord. Thank you for allowing us to come and get our brothers to Lord and able to come here and study your word, Lord, and to be able to do this in the free country still today, Lord. Our prayer, I pray for our country where we're heading, Lord. I pray where you just give our leaders wisdom, Lord. I pray for us as men, Lord, as leaders in our homes, leaders in our community, and leader in our church, Lord. I pray, Lord, we just go out, Lord, and do your will. Help us to make the right decisions. I pray for everybody's safety and liberty here tonight. Bring us back together, Lord, thank you for our eight blessings, just now pray. Amen.
Amen.